All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, September 18th, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting. Sorry we're a couple of minutes getting stuck, a couple of minutes late getting started. We had a little bit of technical difficulties. We had to clear up. At this time, we always invite anyone in the audience that would like to lead us in invocation and pledge of allegiance, then we can come forward. Seeing as no one is stepping up this evening, I will ask Ms. Selena if you would do that for us this evening.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for the opportunity to come together. Thank you for the opportunity to start this meeting with a prayer. We ask for your guidance in making decisions tonight. We ask for your protection in guiding us home, and we ask you to bless this county. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Selena. All right, next up, we have our Ethics Awareness and Conflict of Interest reminder.
Pursuant to GS 153A-44, a commissioner has a duty to vote on matters coming before the board, but may be excused from voting on issues involving the commissioner's own financial interests, official conduct, or on matters on which the commissioner is prohibited from voting under GS 14-234 or 160D-109. In accordance with Chapter 2, Division 3 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances, it is the duty of every commissioner to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. Does any commissioner have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before the Board of Commissioners in this meeting? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict.
Thank you. I believe we have a couple that need to make some comments tonight.
I'd like to make a comment. My wife currently, and she won't be in 2024, she owns Infusion Property Management, and she has, I don't even know how many, because it's a separate business, it's not mine, but she has a few HOAs that she manages, her company. She does manage that one. She won't manage it in 2024, so it won't affect her pay unless they can build a house in 30 days. But if somebody has an issue with it, you can stop by my house and look at my QuickBooks, look at hers, and our checking accounts. We're transparent. We have nothing to hide. But if we do vote on that, since she does currently, I'll probably recuse myself, but she won't do that business in 2024, so I just wanted to disclose that.
Thank you, and that was for Wentz West Pines, right?
Yes, sir, the public hearing, which...
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I have a son that actually works for the applicant, Allied Properties Incorporated. He is a site manager specifically with subdivision excavation and site work. I don't have any financial ties to him, nor does his livelihood related to this one way or the other, whether or not this project is approved.
Okay, thank you.
So I do feel that I have a conflict of interest, however.
Yeah, 160D-109 says if you have a familial relationship with an affected person, so if he wouldn't be affected by this one way or the other, then I wouldn't think there'd be a conflict.
Would, how about like if my wife doesn't have that business in 2024, because I'm telling you right now, it ain't worth the little bit of scrap change that she gets from it. So she's gonna not do that in 2024, but, so...
It would really be at the time of the public hearing, whether that's tonight or at a later date. It would be...
Probably best justice. Yeah, recuse yourself when we actually get to that agenda item and hear the, hear it.
Okay, I just, like I said, I just wanted to disclose it.
Better be safe.
Yep, better safe than sorry.
I can tell you that's not gonna happen.
All right, thank you. All right, next up is public comment. I do not have anyone signed up this evening. Is there anyone who's entered that would like...
We got approval agenda.
Oh, sorry, approval agenda, I'm getting way ahead of myself. Thank you.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Now we can move on to public comment. I don't have anyone signed up this evening. Is there anyone that has entered that would like to speak to public comment this evening? Seeing now one step forward, I will close public comment and move on to Commissioner's report. So we don't have a lot on the agenda tonight. I'm gonna be a little bit long-winded to start out this evening, and we'll work around the room. This past week, Ike and I, Ike, myself and Ike, attended the Albemarle Regional Planning Organization meeting. Some of you probably saw the email from Ike about it, just to the public. The biggest topic discussed at this point is the Mid-Currituck Bridge. It's been a topic of discussion, seems like for at least three decades or better. Right now, currently, the North Carolina Department of Transportation and Turnpike Authority is moving forward with the bridge construction project. That being said, there's two permits that they have to renew, so they're working through that process and expect that that will take 18 to 24 months to effect. And during that time, DOT is gonna be looking into funding mechanisms within the division. People who are familiar with this will recall that there is about $150 million that has been earmarked for this project. That probably would have done some good 10 years ago or 20 years ago, but now it's gonna be a drop in the bucket compared with the current prices on things. So they are looking at how to fund this through several different ways. Interestingly enough, one of them is something we have looked at, which is design, build, finance, operate, and maintain. And going into the P3, which is a private-public partnership, that will be a new thing for them that they have not done before. So that is another thing that they're looking at, where the state won't have to take on the debt, a private entity will, and they will just have to basically pay them to run the bridge. They're also pursuing any federal funds that may be out there in the form of grants from all these various spending sprees the federal government seems to have been on the last few years. And hopefully, they can come up with some money that's sitting around that hasn't been spent to help offset the cost of that as we move forward. I also attended in the last couple of weeks, a meeting with the Corolla Civic Association with DOT. The Corolla Civic Association put that meeting together, so thank you to them for doing that. And they were more, their topics of conversation were housed around the paving of NC 12 and where that's at, and several other problems that have arisen over there. DOT has been restriping the road through Corolla, currently putting some different signs up, and we'll be moving forward with paving that. I believe the project's set to go in 2024. The contract will be let in 2024, and then the contractor has 18 months from that point forward to actually affect the paving. Tourism Advisory Board also met in the past week, first time back since this spring. We have several new people that are on the board, and they were very, very well engaged. I just want to take a moment to thank them for their time and being willing to serve this county and be involved in that board. And as always, everything is volunteer for the most part, and we have a lot of people that are interested in seeing our county succeed. Another topic of conversation that seems to have popped up on Facebook lately that I know Kevin loves is taxes. And there seems to be a lot of speculation around the tax bill that came out in the last few weeks. Everyone's probably gotten that by now. The tax bill showed varying taxes in it and how they are spent. The point of that was not that you get to pick and choose, as some people want to do, I'm not gonna pay a school tax, I don't have kids in the school, that's not how it works. It is designed, it was designed to help show you percentage-wise where your taxes go and how they are spent, and how much goes to fire EMS, for instance, how much goes to the schools, how much is used in the general fund, et cetera. That was the point of the tax bill coming as it did, especially on the heels of a tax increase of 10 cent, which for this county is a significant amount of money. And why we did that, between SROs, a new school, and just breaking even again, that was necessary for us to do that. And so we felt it a good idea to actually show you, at least percentage-wise, how your money is spent and where it goes, and that's why that was there.
Mr. Chairman, we used to do that years ago, and that was done away with because people were complaining so much, and then we bring it back again, and there it is again.
Well, they're complaining, but probably wasn't about 15 people that were actually complaining. And, but it did, at the end of the day, it spawned conversation, which is never a bad thing, and some interesting rebuttals back and forth on spacebook. So, but I thought I'd take a moment to set the record straight at least a little bit. You heard it from the horse's mouth, so to speak. You know, people say that one of, it's always funny when that happens, well, we should just vote out all the commissioners, get rid of them in the next election cycle. Well, I'm not running again, so you don't have to worry about that. Kevin said already he's out, so you won't have to worry about that. But I would challenge anyone that has an interest in this. The budget is available to you, every single page of it, and it's available online. And I would invite you to tell me what it is that you would do differently, or what it is that you would cut out of our budget. Would it be senior services? Would it be schools? Would it be firing EMS service? Response time to you. Would it not be replacing our fire engines and our EMS vehicles that are getting old? Some of them have been totaled, and we have to replace them, and it takes years to do that, and it's very expensive to do. So if you have an interest in the budget process, we have an annual work session for that. Usually around January, we'll get into our annual retreat, and we'll start talking about things that will affect our budget in the following year, and then the staff will be working through that into the spring for adoption. Those meetings are open to the public. You're welcome to attend. Speaking of public comment, I know several of us have probably gotten a message from one of our constituents that likes to come up here all the time about public comment and quasi-judicial proceedings. We've removed public comment from quasi-judicial proceedings because this is a legal thing, for lack of a better description. It is basically a trial of sorts, and public opinion cannot be considered in that. It also cannot be considered at public comment. And Ike had a great, something he just said a little bit ago about it, and that is, you know, you wouldn't walk into a courtroom and start mouthing off to a judge or professing your opinions to a judge. When we're doing quasi-judicial proceedings, the same thing is occurring here. We are sitting as judges, basically, and hearing evidence put on, and so we cannot consider public opinion in that time. We only can consider evidence presented to us at those meetings. That is why you cannot speak at public comment about something that is a quasi-judicial hearing.
Chairman, can I interject really quick?
Of course.
And I'll ask the county attorney, I don't believe the board took any action on removing public comment during quasi-judicial...
We're getting ready to.
What's that?
Oh, we're getting ready to.
Okay, we haven't, yeah, you said we did.
Yes, that is coming, to remove public comment from...
Okay, well, I just want to make sure the public, because you said we did, and I don't want them to think we voted on something behind closed doors or something.
Definitely, everything's in the light.
Okay, so is public comment during quasi-judicial is still going forward...
Right.
...until action is taken one way or the other.
Yes, yes. My apologies. All right, well, that, why don't you kick it off, Mike?
Well, you've covered most of it. I do want to say, and I'm sure other commissioners will speak on this as well, but this afternoon, we did lose a past commissioner, Gene Gregory. I know he worked at the Ford plant for years and retired from the Ford plant. He used to drive car shuttle a lot with other individuals from the county up there. My brother-in-law used to ride with him up there. But Gene Gregory was a good man, did a lot for the county, and he passed today, and it was sorry to hear that, and just want to give a condolences to the family, and that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Kitty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today's September the 18th, and it's only 98 days till Christmas, so it's time for us to start thinking about Operation Santa, which is sponsored by the Social Service Department, but it's supported by some really good people here in Currituck County, as well as our county employees. And one fun way that the county employees support Operation Santa is through the annual Blue Jean Friday, where they get to wear blue jeans if they pay $2. And through this program, it has generated about $1,500 each year, so it's been really well worth it. So I'd like to recommend a temporary amendment to the employee dress code to allow for a Blue Jean Friday fundraiser for Operation Santa program, starting October the 6th through December the 15th. As I said, to participate, you have to pay $2 to wear jeans on Friday, and if I need to make it into a motion, I so move.
What say you, Mr. McCree?
I would not be Mr. Max Scrooge.
Right, okay.
Does that clue overall, oh, no, I'm just kidding. Jean overalls.
I will second Kitty's motion now.
Thank you.
All right, what do we actually need, a motion to approve that, to change that policy, to allow that?
Well, it is a personnel policy of a certain code of dress, so I think it'd be best for the board to waive that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, thank you.
So if you'll look on social media, there'll be more information about Operation Santa and eligibility criteria. And applications for it starts on October the 16th and runs through November the 17th at the Social Service Office at 2793 Currituck Highway. Thank you, and also my condolences to Mr. Gregory's family.
Thank you. Mr. Nurse?
Wednesday, Ike and I met with Dr. Bagwell and Jim Davidson of College of the Albemarle to discuss signage and wayfinding around our Currituck campus and around the Public Safety Center, and it was a very productive meeting. I'm very excited about what may come out of that. And the signage is very important because, as Dr. Bagwell stressed, our campus is growing, our campus is thriving. Not all of COA's campuses have that distinction. And so as we attract more and more students from our own county, both from the Early College and Currituck High School, as well as high school students from Camden, I'm very excited about the signage that will go up, that will tout not only all that Currituck County has to offer, but what COA has to offer as well. Last week also, our first Juvenile Crime Prevention Council meeting was held of the 23-24 school year. We heard updates on the productive programs that were granted through the JCPC in the spring, and I just would like to congratulate the YMCA's DJ Kefazey and Currituck County Schools' Virginia Arrington, as well as Allison Scholler, for the programs that they successfully implemented this summer that helped so many of our students. Nearly 150 of our students directly will benefit from those funds and those programs, so I'm excited that more and more can be done to help all of our students thrive. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Paul, anything from you?
I'll take the rest of your time.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, my condolences also to the Gregory family. Gene and I spoke many a day, and as most of you all know, he was some of my favorite kind of people, pilot. And, you know, I am not sure, Owen, but that anyone has done more or did more for Currituck County's airport than Gene Gregory did. He was full-tilt and saw, I mean, to his credit, this is 20, 30, almost 30 years ago, he staked basically his personal reputation, if you will, on moving forward with the airport, and what he saw what it could become 30 years ago. And we're bearing the fruit of the ground that he plowed, so to say. So again, my condolences to Gene. As Kitty, as you were talking about the blue jeans and the amount of money, I'm thinking if you had Fetterman Friday at $10 a pop, where you wore athletic shorts, a hoodie, and Crocs, that that could generate some serious revenue, cash flow, right? Cash, cash flow. As a reminder, speaking of the airport, October 7th is plows to planes, or planes to plows, or whatever. So that'll be at the Currituck County Airport. Again, it's a great deal. It's a lot of fun. Get to see some classic aircraft, get to see the forestry department and the aircraft that they're flying as well, but it's a good deal. And, Mr. Chairman, I had requested a work session for tonight, and there may have been some misunderstanding, and I still would like to have a work session, and it's specifically on basically where we're at, not on the contractors, not on the performance, not on any of that, and it has to do with the Moyac wastewater plant. I'm concerned about the ratings that, or the readings that we're having coming out of there, specifically the chloroform and fecal. You know, we're 77,000 times above what the permitted limit is. Nitrogen, as free nitrogen and as ammonia, we're nine and a half, or 9.4 and 15.4 percent, or, I'm sorry, nine and a half and 15.4 times what the permitted limit is. I don't claim to be a pollution expert, I don't claim to be an environmental expert, but I am concerned to see the numbers that are this high, and I would like to know for the residents of Currituck what the health threat is. We don't typically have limits, or, you know, permitted limits, one way or the other, without there being a reason behind it. I certainly don't know the why. I don't think any of us do. And so it may be a benign, but, you know, when I look at numbers as high as 77,000 times with the permitted level, I'd like to have somebody reassure me that our residency are not at risk or at threat. That's all I have for this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Well, in response to that, the reason we're doing a closed session, and we will delve into that in closed session, deals with pending litigation with the person that was there. So after speaking with the county attorney, it seemed that we were gonna delve into areas that were better covered under attorney-client privilege, and so all those can be explored, although not publicly. Certainly, the aspects that are public can be touted out afterwards.
And, Mr. Chairman, and again, you know, I had submitted the request, it was on the, originally, the initial, the draft agenda, it disappeared off the agenda. I understand the why, but I still think it's in the public's best interest to understand. Again, not having to deal with the personalities or the individuals or the entities, but when I see numbers that are 77,000 times the permitted limit, and it has to do with chloroform fecal count, that concerns me. So that's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Kevin?
First off, as Chairman White said, last week, I made a phone call two days after everybody got their tax bill to the tax office. It wasn't a political move, because Kevin McCord will not run for county commissioner again, he's not seeking reelection. Talk about myself and the third party. But I thanked every one of them. I reached out to every one of them, and it meant a lot. We have some great county employees that work for the county, and they took a beating those first two days when people, just some of the off-the-wall questions, and just told them, hey, thanks, and if some decision we made made your job a little worse, I apologize. So I do want to thank Tracy and his staff and all of them. Like I said, I literally spoke to every, reached out to everybody. There's a lot of events, there's so much positive stuff goes on in the county. If you read, like, some of the social media pages, don't believe everything you see, because some of the most mumbo jumbo, garbage, trash, and people should be embarrassed sometimes of some of the stuff that they post on there. Community Night for the Sheriff's Office is the 21st, it's at the high school, and Currituck Middle, and Dr. Lutz, I see you sitting there, the forms filled out, and it's, so, like I said, but we had that last year, it was a success. We have so many great things that happen in this county. If you looked at some of the Facebook pages, you would think we were not there, but that's, that's, just people love to be negative. I mean, like I said, no matter what your day is, like you said, it's just easier just to smile and move forward. But we live in a great place. So Community Night, 10:21, it's a free event, 100%, bounce houses, all kinds of good stuff for the kids, candy, wear your Halloween costume, adults can wear their Halloween costume. Make sure it's, you know, obviously rated PG or better, but, yeah, like I said, so that's a great event. The Community Day at Moyac Fire Department, our volunteer fire departments do an awesome job in the county. I like to thank them, they save us, our tax rate would probably be double if we didn't have them. So the Community Day at Moyac Fire Department is on the October 14th, that's Saturday, I believe, it's the 14th, from 10 to 3 in Moyac. The Plains and Plows, awesome event. I know it was not Plains and Plows, last year was just Plains. They had an event with just Plains, because we attended. The Christmas parade, I run the Christmas parade with the Cooperative Extension Office, donate time, money, all that stuff to the county, but it's all for the kids. Operation Christmas Assistance, we shop for 100 and plus kids a couple nights a week. We went and bought tons of gifts for kids that aren't fortunate, and, you know, this year's probably gonna be even tougher, because your average citizen's struggling just as bad with the price of everything, milk, gas, whatever. I mean, so like I said, if you can donate to these programs, business owners, I donate, my wife donates, we get tons of people in the community to donate, and we appreciate it. The $2, I mean, like Commissioner Beaumont said, I'd be down for the Fetterman, I'd pay 20, I'd pay 20 on that one, but Ike, I know you probably don't want that one, and I don't think my...
I'd pay 20 not to see.
I think we need to pay 20 for Ike to do it.
Yeah, I'd pay 100, but, no, there is a bunch of great stuff that goes on in the county, so don't believe everything on the internet, because it's not always true. But the Christmas parade is 12:01, first Friday of the month. Every year, it gets bigger. I'd like to thank William from the airport, because this year it's getting so big where, you know, we might have to just, you know, shovel 158, no, I'm just joking. But like I said, it grows every year, and the Cooperative Extension ladies, they're awesome, Cameron and her staff. If it wasn't for them, I couldn't do it all. They help out a lot, and they are priceless, two great assets, county employees as well. Like I said, just pay attention to what's going on in your county. The schools are back in session. You know, we have SROs at the schools, we can publicly say that, we have SROs at the school, from the time they open to the time they leave, which is a great thing, and I've said it before, you wouldn't think you'd have to have that, but in today's times, there's some crazy people in the world, unfortunately. Like you said, social media, 144 bucks. If you think somebody can do better, and their skin's thick enough, law enforcement, 22 years, nothing on being an elected official. So like I said, and we do need good people to run. Like I said, I'm not, you know, being negative, because we live in a great county with tons of amenities, and like you said, we want to keep them, and we want to just continue to grow, have some of the nicest parks, some of the nicest ballfields, the horses, the beaches, I mean, it don't get any better. And if you don't think we have enough amenities here, I'm sorry, you're missing the beat. So that's it for me, and if I forgot something, I will pick it up for me. And condolences, yeah, there's always the next meet. But in condolence, Gene Gregory was a great, great asset to this county, and the airport and his family, you know, and I'm very sorry for his passing. Top-notch guy, he would argue with me at McShell in the morning while I was getting fuel, and why we voted for this or that, but, like, at the end of the day, he was a friend, he was a good, good guy, did a lot for this county, and made a lot of things happen. So prayers for his family, that's it.
All right, thank you. Owen, good luck following Kevin.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like has been said, I had the privilege and the honor of serving with Gene for 12 years, and I grew up in the same community that Gene lived in, and none of them all my life, and Paul is exactly right, if it had not been for Gene, the airport would not be where it's at today. And I do have an idea on how to honor him for that contribution to the county that I'll bring up at a later date. But he will be missed, appreciated his phone calls over the years, and he was the type of guy, he'd fuss at you, and then the next day, call you and tell you he didn't mean anything about it, and he will be missed. He was just, as Kevin said, an all-around good guy. I'd like to end kind of on a good note, give a shout-out and kudos to a Currituck County business. I was just recently, it was recently announced that Sanctuary Vineyards Wine, The Plank, was awarded a Governor's Cup for the best-selling wine in the Muscudine grape category, and it was awarded by the North Carolina Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services during the 23-20, 2023 Wine Competition. It is the state's most prestigious award for wine-making, and it is no small feat for a small vineyard like Sanctuary is in Currituck here in Jarvisburg. like Sanctuary is in Currituck here in Jarvisburg. Little side note here on them, the Wright family, it's been seven generations of farmers who have adapted over the years to what was needed to keep the farming tradition that was established a long time ago going here in Currituck County. The imagery that is pressed on the bottle of The Plank is the face of Blackbeard. And we all know the stories of Blackbeard. And the name suggests a popular pirate practice of walking the plank while highlighting a chapter in history from the Outer Banks of North Carolina. It was not the only wine that was awarded awards this year at the competition. Also, the Rosé Wildflowers and the Abonero Pearl were awarded with medals along with two handcrafted blends. And I cannot pronounce this, the Vinagoneer and Cabernet Sauvignon. I probably butchered that one bad.
It's okay.
It's all right.
Well, you got to press.
Just proves you're not a wino.
You got to press one for speaking Southerns. That's what I did. The goal with each bottle that John Wright, who is the vineyard master, is to capture a wine that tastes like it's from Currituck County. He draws inspiration for each new wine label from the designs of issues that are very good for here in Currituck County. And he enjoys creating new wines for his people who buy from him that are reminiscent of such area-specific work and region. Sanctuary Vineyards has brought a lot of prestige to Currituck County in terms of wine making. And like I say, kudos to John Wright and the Wright family on this prestigious award. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. We'll hear from him later this evening, actually, on our tourism. He's got a grant assistance he's asking for. All right. Mr. McCray, anything for you this evening?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to add from the Almar RPO meeting that you also had asked a question of DOT's Division One Engineer, the status of Cory's Ditch.
Oh, yes, thank you.
That is a project over on Knott's Island where DOT is considering, in order to replace the bridge on the six fifteen causeway, to close Cory's Ditch as one alternative to the, to the ongoing difficulty they're having maintaining a bridge there due to the, the current, they say. The response to the question was that it was still under study, and DOT was still determining whether it is feasible to fill the ditch because of concerns about flooding issues. Should they fill it? They're also looking at Virginia Beach with a hydraulic study to determine what impact filling Cory's Ditch would have on flooding issues all around Knott's Island, I guess up into Back Bay. On Friday afternoon, I had a telephone call from Martha Burns from Knott's Island that some of you may know, expressing concern as a longtime Knott's Island resident. She also talked about, which I had not heard, about a project called the Three-Tierred Marsh that Virginia Beach is constructing or has constructed in Back Bay, and the concern that that is going to exacerbate flooding within Knott's Island potentially. She did, she did say that she and her two brothers have a meeting with Virginia Beach's engineer about these issues, and are going to be meeting in Creed sometime in October, and asked if I would like to have a county staff member, which I will identify someone to attend with, with Martha and her brothers to try to get an understanding of what all is going on with these various projects and the, and the impact on flooding, if any, on Knott's Island. Today was also the second bid for the airport fuel farm replacement project. We will wait for our engineers to put together the bid tabs. There were two bidders this time. The last, the first bid round, there was only one bidder, and we'll get their tab, tabs and the results and bring that back to the board for consideration of an award. This afternoon, me along with a number of county staff members had a telephone conference call with Moody's. I mean, Standard and Poor's, one of the rating agencies regarding our finance for the Tolles Creek Elementary School financing of that project. I think we had, we had a good meeting with them. It lasted a little bit over an hour. Our consultant felt like we did well. We will know September twenty-ninth what rating, Standard and Poor's will be inclined to give to the, to the county's debt offering. And then tomorrow morning, the same team of staff members and I will be having a conference call with rating agency Moody's to make the same presentation to them with the expectation that they will also give us a rating by September twenty-ninth on our debt. Assistant County Manager Rebecca Gay and I have started check-in with departments. We're going to do this every quarter. We're going to sit down with department heads to, to take a review of their budgets, to see what the status is of the budget each, their budgets each quarter, to ensure, among other things, that they're proceeding rapidly and regularly with their capital projects that have been approved. In the past, we have found departments have year after year requested the same capital projects, same money, and yet nothing ever happens. And so we're going to make sure that this budget year and going forward, that there's going to be a fulfillment and completion of requested capital projects and expenditures of those appropriated funds. We're also going to be checking in regularly with regard to overtime to make sure that our departments are maintaining watch over their employees, not so much public safety, Commissioner McCord, but other departments.
Doesn't matter for Kevin.
I'm salaried to talk this.
Right, right. But we want to, we want to be sure that, that, that people aren't, employees aren't utilizing overtime when it should not be necessary. But it also gives us an idea, if there's too much overtime that is being required for a department to fulfill its function, then we need to take a deeper dive as to whether they're not working effectively, efficiently, or is there a true need for additional staff? And then there's also other methods besides monetary compensation in order to give someone their, their required overtime, such as time off. And so we'll be looking at that as well. But this has all been communicated to department heads with the expectation that overtime is a last resort for the typical department. I also want to bring the board and, and community in Currituck up to speed on a email that I received from the Duck Town manager recently. Duck's been awarded a FEMA grant for resiliency to North Carolina twelve. They will be starting a project to install breakwater seals, create a living shoreline, install sidewalks, and to elevate NC twelve between Resort Realty and Sunset Grill in, in Duck, beginning right after Columbus Day into next spring. They reported there will be times where there will be one, one lane, and there will be flaggers controlling traffic. I've asked their manager, and he said to me today that, that their communications folks have sent information to and spoken with Randall Edwards, our public information officer, so we can start pushing out information on, on the, the front end of this and regularly throughout the project to let those in Currituck County that have to travel NC twelve to and from Corolla to understand what the status of the project is.
When would that, Mr. Manager, when would that project start? Because it already takes about twenty-five minutes to get through Duck, the couple miles.
They, they say it would start after Columbus Day.
No, after owner's weekend.
Yeah, okay. And how long? Few months?
Till the spring is what they, they said in their email.
Probably July fourth.
Right. Where things go nowadays is probably.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. How about you, Ms. Morgan? Anything this evening?
No report.
All right. All right. Thank you. Moving on. All right. Next up, we have administrative reports, and only one item on the agenda this evening, a presentation by Roman Gabriel, President of Sold Out Youth Foundation. Mr. Gabriel, come on up to the lectern and introduce yourselves to us and the rest of the world.
Good evening. How is everyone doing tonight?
Good.
Well, it's an honor and pleasure to be in front of you. Commissioner Payment, nice to see you again. And very excited to be able to come before you this evening. And this will be our fifth, fifth year with our program Sold Out School Drug and Alcohol Education Program in Currituck Schools. Our program is a nonprofit, five oh one C three, that's been around since two thousand and three. We've served over thirty-five districts, small, medium, large, here in the state of North Carolina since two thousand and twelve. We currently, our program is also in the state of California, the state of Arizona, and we've done the program as well in Tennessee, Georgia, and Florida. But since COVID, we're kind of a, like a lot of companies, a, a success story because we were once a in-school, in-person assembly program with a follow-up program covering drug and alcohol abstinence, a long-term approach to drug and alcohol abstinence, which research tells us is the number one way to reach teenagers today, long-term, to keep them off of drugs and alcohol. So I've been in this space for thirty years, since nineteen ninety-seven, working in schools, from grade school to college, as well as youth organizations. I served, my wife and I, five years with a Fellowship of Christian Athletes as a state director in, in Kansas, as well as regional director in Arkansas and on the board in Wilmington, North Carolina. So I started a program that we were involved in back then called One Way to Play Drug and Alcohol Free. It was a program for student athletes. When the Dare program was canceled back in two thousand and twelve, I was living in Boone, North Carolina at the time and was involved with a corporate and community business get-together on Monday mornings with a group of very successful, many of them retired businesspeople who were living in Boone, either full-time or part-time. And they were upset about the fact that they were not able to have a drug and alcohol program for their kids anymore. So I spoke up and said, this is something I'm very versed at doing, and would be glad to put together a program for the schools. And I said, I need your backing. And they put up the funding for it, and we tested this program in our first three counties in Boone, Watauga County, Avery County, and Ash County successfully for three years. And I was then introduced to the state, the state ABC Board. They asked me to come and speak to all the ABCs in North Carolina regarding our drug and alcohol education program. I spoke in Greensboro to them, and of course, they were looking at the time for places to put ten percent of their proceeds, which here in Currituck is true as well, that goes towards legitimate drug and, I'm sorry, alcohol abstinence programs for under, for kids programs. So we began to work with ABC boards across the state and have been for, since two thousand and twelve. I was introduced through the Dare County program to Mike Payment regarding our program. We met here in two thousand and eighteen to show them what we would like to offer for Currituck County schools. And happy to say that our program has been very successful and very well, very well received by students and faculty here in Currituck. It's a very unique program because we have been working with not only the Dare County Task Force, which I'm a member of, involved working with them on a monthly basis. We were also working with the federal Education Department regarding this program, as well as the DEA and the southern border. The comprehensiveness of our program has changed. Since COVID, we started doing distance learning to students through our program online during that period where kids were relegated to being at home. This program has three program points that are extremely important, which we developed since then through the feedback of our school partners. And I had been involved with Hyde County, Dare County, Pasquotank County, Perquimans County with this program as well in our local area here, as well as larger districts like New Hanover County, Onslow County, Craven County, Pitt County, and others. So ours is a very interesting program because it accepts a lot of feedback from working with counselors and working with teachers and coaches, and of course, getting feedback through students. So the new program that we developed from social distance learning has morphed because of the opioid problem that we are facing, this crisis that we're currently facing in our country with over a hundred thousand deaths over the last year. Number one killer of eighteen to forty-five-year-olds and number, one of the top three killers of thirteen to seventeen-year-olds. Currently, there's more opioids and fentanyl coming into the country enough to kill every person in the country right now. There was twenty-three thousand pounds that had been seized at the border since January. So we took on not only the alcohol and drug issue, but took on the opioid issue about a year ago and began to successfully deliver this program. So basically, the program is very simple. We want to get the information about underage drinking and underage drug and alcohol and opioid use to the three most important groups that need it today. And that is, first of all, our school staffs. We have a staff program that basically, can you pull up my website? Is that possible?
Website? No, if you have slides, you can.
Oh, I've got, okay, it's right here.
There's a pointer next to it where you can see arrows.
Oh, you might have to show me. I haven't used a pointer. Well, just hit this to move it forward.
Just the arrows left to right.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Great. Beautiful. So as in talking to superintendents around the country about the, well, let me first say this. Many, many of the school systems, because of the emphasis on testing curriculum, which is quite, you know, large, many of our school systems around the country, including North Carolina, have gone away from, in the past here, drug and alcohol abstinence programs, character, life skills programs, goal-setting programs, programs that are, that are more student-intensive in terms of life skills and teaching kids about how to live life successfully. So one of the things that we knew that we needed to do when we started coming into schools was to provide some of these programs that they didn't either have the time to do, nor the money, nor the resources to do, or the technology that we spend a lot of money and time on. So in talking to superintendents, the first concern is, is how do we get school staffs on the same page? Everybody on the same page with this information? So we created a staff portal that we're now making available that, by the way, we met in April with all of your counselors here in Currituck County, had a great meeting. They were very receptive to this new program. What we learned about five to eight years ago was that principals are extremely busy. So we went through the principals to introduce the program, started at the superintendent level, but we realized fast that we needed to engage the counselors because they were on the ground dealing with students and parents about these issues. So the current program not only has a full-go program for drug and alcohol abstinence, it's a college-accredited curriculum. Right now, we're the only college-accredited curriculum for opioid and drugs and alcohol currently with this platform in the country. We know that because the places we've been going don't have programs like this, and we're getting calls from all over the country. This summer, I was extremely busy. Never in my years of doing this have I talked to schools in the summer. But this summer, I've been talking to superintendents all over the country who are looking for answers because kids are dying, and so are parents. Unfortunately, I've had the, the opportunity to meet with parents who have lost kids to drug and alcohol use. It isn't just a serious problem in Currituck and Dare County. It's a serious problem all over our country right now. So superintendents are very open right now because they want their staffs to have the right researched information. So for example, our drug and alcohol program, which we've been doing for ten years, has been a one-hundred percent abstinence approach. We don't talk about responsibility with grade school, junior high, and high school students. We talk only about abstinence. And currently, we're in a different position. All of us here grew up where experimentation was kind of a rite of passage for teenagers. I know it was when I was in school. But unfortunately, we're at a position now where experimentation could cost a student's life. Forty-seven percent of the fentanyl-laced products, whether they be pharmaceutical drugs that are, that are pressed or whether they be in vape, marijuana, cocaine, e-cigarettes, forty-seven percent of those products can kill because there's enough fentanyl to do that. So what we have to do is we have to educate our, our staffs, first of all, because we were line up. What I found in visiting schools this year across the country is, is when I talk to counselors, principals, student services directors, superintendents, ROS officers, caseworkers, and others, is you could talk to twenty of them, and you would get twenty different answers on this problem. There's a lot of stigma out there about this, a lot of. Um, there's a lot of stigma out there about this, a lot of ignorance about this, a lot of misinformation about this. Unfortunately, it's been politicized, which has been one of the major problems that our law enforcement, our hospitals, our EMS, uh, and our schools are having problems with. Um, many parents don't want to talk about this because they're afraid that if they were to talk about this with other parents, that it might be saying that someone in their home has this problem, or, uh, one of their own students has a problem like this. Uh, so the, what is the best way that we can communicate the information to get this, uh, very, um, important information in the hands of the right people, uh, and a community so that we can, uh, we can, uh, come up against this alcohol problem and drug and opioid problem? Um, so what we did first was we created a portal for staff in the schools. That's a password-created portal, which I sent you guys this information, I think on August twenty-ninth, the same information that any superintendent would get if they asked us for this information. So you have everything. You have the password, uh, program for the staff program for the counselors. You have the password program for the parents and you have the student program as well. So what we've learned is that, uh, people are comfortable communicating on their devices and on their iPads and on their computers. Um, we've been able to overcome the stigma of this problem by using the school delivery system, which is in place right now, which they do a fabulous job. One of the things we've done over the last ten years is come alongside the schools to create a program that worked well with their commuter, computer curriculum and their current way that they communicate daily with parents, students and staff. So, uh, what we're, what we were able to do, uh, was to create a, a communication system that can reach all three of the most important people, and that is the staffs, the parents and the students at the same time, with the same researched information. So the responses that we're getting from parents are, is great relief. Because as we used to do this program for the students, um, students would go home and they would know a lot more than their parents about, uh, about these issues. Because ours is a very comprehensive program, it's college-accredited, uh, it's, it's online. Um, uh, high school students can get credits for a two-year or four-year school by taking our elective options, whether that be the effects of drugs, drug and alcohol on teenagers, whether that be our fentanyl education program, whether that be our fitness program. So it's kind of a cafeteria program of content that comes alongside of schools and allows them to use our, uh, program to come along in many different iterations. The exciting part of our program is, is because of, uh, since distance learning in meeting with counselors in, uh, high schools, junior highs, grade schools, early colleges, at-risk kids and alternative schools, uh, has been an incredible feedback about new iterations that schools have helped us to develop. Uh, this last year in Fontana Unified School District, uh, in California, we, we developed our first after-school program with twenty grade schools and middle schools successfully. Um, they helped us develop a parental letter, um, that goes out with the information about what their kids are going to be receiving through this drug and alcohol abstinence program. They also get a letter that gives them the actual, um, information of, about our pledge poster and QR code website where they can go to get the same information their kids are going to get when we give the online assembly. That's thirteen minutes that students receive either in homeroom, PE health, or as homework. One of the things we also realized was, is many schools are not wanting people to come in personally and do assemblies anymore. There's, there's a real-time constraint. They also don't want kids missing a lot of classroom time. So we figured that thirteen minutes would not be a lot, want, uh, to get a program installed and started with their students. The, uh, the nice thing about the parental program is, is that the parents will have all the information. They'll have the parental portal, which deals with marijuana, alcohol, vape, cocaine, e-cigarettes, social mindfulness, mental emotional wellness. Each and every one of these categories is, uh, supported with at least three research links where all, all parents have to do is click on those links to learn more about that information. Uh, we also talk to them about probably the most important factor in this fight against drugs and alcohol and especially this opioid problem and fentanyl. Uh, what parents don't realize is, is when they give that cell phone to their third or fourth grader, and right now ninety-five percent of students have, have cell phones. Um, they're given to them as early as third or fourth grade. Uh, many of the parents, very rightly so, are giving them those phones for an emergency so that they are in trouble, they can call their parents. But what the parents don't realize is, is that students can easily get around social networking. They can get around the constraints on TikTok, the safety protocols, as well, as, as well as on the other social sites. Uh, about, uh, based on our statistics and working with all of our students this year in, in all of these districts in four states, what we've realized is, is, um, the feedback from students is, is about eighty percent of students are on TikTok daily. Um, that's a dangerous situation because the way that they're getting marketed the fentanyl-laced products, whether it's vape, whether it's e-cigarettes, whether it's marijuana, whether it's cocaine, whether it's, uh, uh, whether it's, uh, pain kit, pain pills or pharmaceutical drugs, they're being marketed to our students on their phones. So when parents give students the phones, they don't realize that they're giving their student a tool that could kill them. Uh, it's the number one way that accidental deaths are happening. And we need to separate the difference between what law enforcement talks about and the statistics talk about in terms of, uh, fentanyl, um, being a drug addict's drug. It is. It is a problem with drug addicts. But where we're seeing the accidental deaths are with innocent kids that are experimenting for the first time, that may make that mistake one time. The other thing we're seeing is that this is such a powerful drug that kids that aren't doing the drugs, but just hanging out with their friends that are, and they touch the material, can die that way as well. Uh, we just had a student, um, uh, well, we, we just had, uh, a student in Fent-, uh, that died from fentanyl-laced vape that was a grade school student out in California in one of our schools where we were at in the spring. Um, we also, uh, here, uh, in New Hanover County, had a student that, um, took a fentanyl-laced product after school, was dying. Um, the, the caseworker that happened to be on campus saw that, that, that this, this student was having the overdose, ran into the, uh, nurse's office, broke the window, broke into the drug, uh, you know, uh, there and got the, got the Narcan. It took two doses to bring the student back to life. Um, one of our s- uh, parents in Arizona that lost her eighteen-year-old daughter to accidental fentanyl overdose. She was a incredible student athlete, beautiful young girl. Uh, she had a knee injury from being a gymnast, uh, was on pain pills. One of her fellow students on TikTok saw where those same pain pills she was taking were cheap on, online. She told her about them. She ordered those fake fentanyl pills and of course, they were delivered right under the nose of her parents by the US mail, right to her home. The night that she took the first pill in her bedroom, she died on the spot and her mom found her the next morning, next to her bed, dead. She had no idea how it had happened and what had happened until she looked at her daughter's phone and saw the text links between her and her friend about this, uh, these pain pills that she could purchase on TikTok. So, you know, our program is targeted right now, um, at the solution, which is, first of all, we need to educate the staffs of schools so that they are up to date with the researched information and have the ability to speak intelligently and on the same page with parents and kids. That's number one. Number two, our parental program is made for parents to engage. We're past the point of parents not paying attention to what goes on on those social networking on their phones of their kids. They have to pay attention. And if they don't, they're putting their kids in danger. So it's really important that we get the information to parents before we put this program in action with their kids so that they can have this discussion with their kids. Step three of our pledge, these posters go in high-traffic areas of the schools. Uh, they stay up all year long. A JPEG version goes up on the homepage of each school website. Step three, number one, is that kids, uh, commit to be drug and alcohol abstinence. Number two, they commit to hold their good friends accountable. And number three, the most important and powerful part of our program, they promise to go home the day that they see the program and tell their parents or their guardian that they made a commitment to be drug and alcohol abstinence. So if the parents have this information in their hands with a letter, this is also a huge risk mitigator for the schools. The schools are in fear right now because what we can't have is, is a parent that has a, a son or daughter die on campus when the information was available, uh, and we didn't make that available to the parents. So what our program does is it's a tremendous risk mitigator for the schools. Because we actually have districts, uh, in our program right now that have sign-off when these letters are sent home to the parents. The parents have to sign off if they received the information on this drug and alcohol abstinence program, on fentanyl and on, and on this problem so that they have to take action and have to be held accountable, that they have the information. Uh, third thing that we do is, once the parents have the information, uh, we've gotten feedback from parents that they actually have the conversation with their students before we actually execute on campus. We've had parents say, uh, I'll tell you a quick story of a middle school student. Um, uh, parents got the letter from us talking about the fact that on this date, their kids would be receiving this training on drug and alcohol abstinence and this platform that's being made available to the school. Um, this parent got with her daughter and said, um, honey, are you going to take the drug and alcohol abstinence pledge? I hear that you're going to see this program here. And during social distance learning, um, the parents actually watched the assembly video on the site with their kids, which was really powerful. Well, a lot of parents were very at ease being able to have that conversation, which is a uncomfortable one for a lot of parents. So this, this mom, uh, took her daughter and said, I'm very glad you're going to do that, walked her into, uh, their bar in their house that was loaded with alcohol, uh, and proceeded to take every bottle of alcohol, throw it in a green trash bag and say, honey, I'm in this with you. We're going to do this together, uh, which a lot of parents, uh, this, this is their chance to have a very uncomfortable conversation and be ready for that conversation and have the information. What do we know about stigma? We know that lots of times stigma is untrue because it causes people to be fearful. And when people are fearful without education, there's a real problem because now, now we get misinformation. We get scared to talk about things. What this program does is empower schools and students and, and, uh, parents at the same time to discuss very difficult subjects, but in the privacy of their own home, through their devices, as opposed to having a conversation like we're having here tonight, where it might be very uncomfortable for a parent or for a staff member at a school to have these conversations. So our program's visual for the students. Everything's online on their phone. Um, there it is, okay. So it's a college-accredited program. It's broken down into four major program, um, parts, which is on the homepage. Uh, we have a health and wellness program. We've got a fentanyl education program, a drug and alcohol abstinence program, and what we call our Student Success One-O-One Program. Our Student Success One-O-One Program is the most favorite part of our program with students because it's over two-hundred-and-fifty one-to-three-minute videos that are communicated life skills, character traits, drug and alcohol information in one-to-three-minute videos that are well-done, fast, targeted, uh, with celebrities from sports, entertainment, music, education, corporate business, that talk to kids directly about how to take these life skills and implement them into their personal life daily. So on one hand, we're a warning system for staffs, schools, parents, kids, because we've got a curriculum that is very comprehensive, that's very easy to teach, that can be iterated in homeroom, health class, through athletic programs, through after-school programs, counseling programs, caseworker programs, PTA and, uh, parent, uh, programs, which those are current iterations that are happening in schools across the state of North Carolina now. The cool thing about the, uh, student program is, is that over the past five years, eighty percent of your middle school students have taken this pledge. Uh, we've, uh, on the testimonial page, you'll take a look at testimonies. We've received hundreds and hundreds of, of letters through this program where it basically says when they go on this QR code, or when they go on the website, that they're taking the pledge and there's a box that says, what do you think of the program? Well, your students have told us things like, hey, I didn't understand that fentanyl was so dangerous. Thank you for letting me know. I realize now that I can't use my phone to purchase drugs or anything online, that it could be dangerous for me. I realize now how to help my friends. I've taken the drug and alcohol abstinence pledge and I'm going to stay drug and alcohol abstinence. So our goal in working with law enforcement, task forces and school systems is to start your kids in sixth grade or as low as fifth grade, which we've done, uh, with this program, before they make decisions about the lifestyle of drugs and alcohol. Because as you know, once students make a, a decision about drugs and alcohol, all bets are off. And when you get in that lifestyle, it's extremely difficult to turn back the wheel. So our goal is to give confidence in peer pressure, positive peer pressure through this pledge. Other students go to the pledge, other students challenging their other students to take it, their friends. So when eighty percent of your students take the pledge and the other twenty percent haven't, there's peer pressure on the positive side because a lot of students write to us through this program. Hey, I'm the only one in my peer group that doesn't want to drink or do drugs. One, all my friends want me to drink, but I don't want to. But as you guys know, the peer pressure on our, on our kids today is incredible. Through not only social networking, but when kids make a mistake today, it's not like when I made a mistake and messed up when I was in high school, when I went into the, uh, to the office and I saw the, the detention officer and he gave me two days of detention. Nobody knew about it. I went home and then I caught more flak from my mom than I did the school and was embarrassed by it. But when I came back to school, nobody else knew about it. But when a student makes that same mistake today, it's all over social networking. The, the pressure, the suicidal pressure on our kids through the social, uh, through, uh, the target, all the studies point to drugs and alcohol and suicide are linked. Those two things are linked because when students lose hope, which a lot of our students have, a lot of students don't think that they're going to get the opportunities that their parents got. And these are things that students share with us. Students will share with us through this pledge program, this little, simple QR code that they can go on with their phone. They'll share things about their life that they won't share with their parents, that they won't share with their counselor, that they won't share with their good friend. But because they're so comfortable communicating on this, they'll tell the truth about a lot of things. And what we do is, we're able to take that feedback immediately from your students and we turn it in to your counselors. Now, if it's too personal, uh, names are, names are, are taken off. I get a one-way email from this QR code that comes to us that we're able to go through and give a cross-section. So not only do your counselors in your school, now it's not about a statistic or, or just a nebulous student. We're talking about giving information to each one of your schools that gives targeted information about your own students to your counselors. So this gives an opportunity for counselors to understand that if sixty or seventy of the students from, say, Currituck Middle School are saying that they're struggling with depression or anxiety, or they're struggling with things at home. We, the, kids will tell us things at home that go on. Um, you know, let's not candy coat it. Parents are a part of the problem. Some of them are giving the kids drugs and alcohol at home. Some of these parents are okay with them doing vape and doing these things. So for the last six years, for example, kids have learned that I can go online and I could buy vape. That's no big deal. That's a safe place to buy it. But what we've learned is, is if, if you're getting it online, then that's a chance for a child to die.
Mr. Gabriel, I'm going to get you to pause for a second and then I'm going to ask you a question.
Yes.
Uh, I've heard a lot about school, 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 school. So the question is, what about private schools, homeschools? Is this program available to the general public? Do you have to pay to get in?
It's a, it's a school-initiated program. Uh, but we do serve private schools, public schools, Christian schools, faith-based schools. We just signed our first Boys and Girls Club in California. Um, we work with athletic-oriented programs like Pop Warner. Um, again, these are the same-age kids, uh, and the way to communicate with them is easy online.
So what about, uh, you know, parents that have their kid in a, you know, my, my school, my son, for instance, is homeschooled, right? He's on an online.
We would make it available to homeschools as well. We're, uh, we're, uh, the, the nice thing about this program is, is, uh, is it's comprehensive, it's online, it's college-accredited, it's risk mitigates, easy, it's easy to access. All we do to start your school off is what I did here with your school this spring. We just meet with the counselors. They go over the counselor engagement program. We walk them through it. They have all the information. We don't tell schools what to do. We give them, um, suggestions based upon what's worked in other school systems and what's worked in yours. We have a exit meeting every year with the counselors where they tell us what they like, uh, new iterations that they think that they can do. Uh, in, in, I moved here back before COVID, so my offices for my foundation are, are in Dare County. So, you know, I'm available like I am tonight. Um, uh, we're, I'm, I'm very, um, committed to, to Currituck County, Pasquotank County, Dare County, Hyde County, Perquimans. You guys are right here in our area. Um, I'm very excited to tell you that, um, you know, I saw where you guys have an opioid task force, which I'm excited about. Um, Dare County, we launched the One Pill to Kill Program about a month ago that's educating companies, educating rental companies, educating lifeguards, educating educational organizations, private organizations. Um, we have an athletic program. I do a radio show called. I do a radio show called The Roman Gabriel Show through the Outer Banks Voice and on the Carolina Radio Network, which services Currituck County. So we have an athletic program. We provide you with a two and a half minute program that talks to your parents directly about drug and alcohol abstinence, points them to our website, also talks about the dangers of opioids and fentanyl and how to get Narcan in your area. So for example, our, our task force in Dare County has three places that are free that parents can get Narcan whenever they need it. So this athletic program tells your boosters, tells your athletic parents, as well as your community at large, all about this program through PSAs that are audio and video PSAs that we run on the Outer Banks Voice. So we feel like we have a community approach, but what I'm excited about is, is the schools get to be the hero. We use their communication system and they provide the program through all their different programming and then we can get to the parents, which is so critical.
Yeah, and Roman, I just wanted to say, I mean, I know you gave out a lot of information this evening and it's nice because it's live. It's going to be available on a, on a website, YouTube, and it's going to be broadcast on the cable. So if you didn't hear it tonight, it's going to be repeated and people can be able to see and hear about the sold out program, you, what it's about, and they'll be able to, you know, get more information, contact the schools, go to your website or wherever. But I have listened to your radio show too, and you've had some nice celebrities on there too that you speak with. It's a good radio program. And I was able to attend one of the live sessions before COVID at the Mark Middle School. And I will say, I, I sat up in the bleachers with the students and I was impressed of the focus that they were listening and, and, and raising their hands, asking questions. And when you asked for the commitments and all that, the amount of hands that raised up in the, in the stands up there, I was looking around, I was really impressed with the interaction at the middle school level. So I will say that what I saw was successful. And, I mean, I appreciate you bringing this to the board, everybody out there who's watching and listening, because I think it's important and I think you've been doing a great job and I just appreciate that portion of it.
Well, I'll just say this, that, and I want the school system, I'm glad, Ms. Jarvis, that you're here tonight because the ABC Board of Currituck County pays for this drug and alcohol abstinence program. It doesn't cost the schools a penny. We're also working with Trillium Health Resources here, not only in Currituck County, that's supporting our fentanyl program, but supporting it in 28 counties in eastern North Carolina. So the school system doesn't have to do anything. We provide all the information. We provide the preparation. We provide the platform. We provide the curriculum. We provide the training. So what, what the biggest thing I'm concerned about is, is I've never had the chance to meet Dr. Lutz. I've wrote him some letters. I would.
Right behind you.
Oh, is he here? Dr. Lutz, how are you? Pleasure to meet you.
Luke's.
As Luke's, by the way.
Well, pleasure. I, I really would like to work closely with your system. We, we want to provide this for your schools, for your parents and for your students, as well as for your athletic programs to communicate to the, to the county at large.
Roman, if I could interact and say something, and Commissioner Jarvis and myself are both on the opioid task force. Obviously, I'm a captain at the sheriff's office. We have an SRO at every school and that's one thing me and Commissioner Jarvis have talked about, is getting them when they're young. You know, they're seeing stuff in houses and I, I go to those houses still to this day where kids just, you know, and I'm not knocking moms or dads or whatever, that live in some very tough environments that kids shouldn't see, not in today's times, but unfortunate. And that's one thing where, you know, the, we have an SRO there for school safety, for the staff, the kids and everything, but they're doing other stuff and interacting with the kids on drugs and different, we're going to send them to all kinds of trainings in the summertime. And I don't know if you know this, and not Dare County, but Currituck, no offense to Dare, we're better, but we, the in-service, yeah, the in-service, a lot better, the in-service two years ago was on mentoring youth and it was Currituck County's. Our SROs and our summer programs that we do, our sheriff is a huge advocate of that. We have tons of local businesses that support Chairman White. Kids have never been to the beach. They've lived here their whole life, never been to the, never been to the sand, never seen it. They get to go on a horse tour, they ride on that. But like, we interact and then we have a mentor camp, but that was part of the in-service for the whole state out of 100 counties, was our mentoring, our youth programs. And like, kudos to you and everything that you do, because you've got to get them when they're young. And, you know, you've got a lot of grandparents in Currituck County raising their, their grandkids and that's another problem.
Well, we could provide the opioid program, Trillium's working with your county manager. The way I got pulled in was Trillium was doing, you know, providing Narcan for the county. So Dave Peterson, who's the senior, the senior CEO for Trillium Health Resources here in eastern North Carolina, contacted me through a meeting we were at together at the Dare County Task Force and said, listen, we'd love to use your opioid, drug and alcohol program. Can you make it available where we could move it into the schools through the 28 counties that we're doing this program in? And I said, I'd be glad to. We'd also glad to make it available to your law enforcement group. We have law enforcement groups that are using this as an educational tool. I will say this, that this summer, we took the soldouttv.com opioid page for students and we had professionals work on it with us to make it student friendly. The language is all student friendly. It's video and visual oriented, so all of our, all of our curriculum for the kids is visual, the way they like to learn.
Oh, yeah.
So it's easy for them to access. And we know through the schools, you guys can't do all the work, so the bottom line is we're providing the support material so that kids can access this daily on their phones anytime they want. So that's what the posters do. The posters lead the kids to it and then they remind them of the, the commitment they made. So what I'm most excited about in working with our school systems and our partners, and I call them partners because it's been the school systems that have helped us build this successful program. Without their feedback, we wouldn't be in the position we are today to offer the curriculum. I have a, a group of professional psychologists, psychiatrists, law enforcement professionals, coaches that write this curriculum. We have a curriculum accreditation company in Phoenix that accreditates our curriculum. So we're continuing to give you new curriculum as the year goes on. So it's a, it's a continuous content program.
Because the drug, the, the drugs too, and like Commissioner Jarvis can attest, the drug changes. I mean, like, I mean, the opioid is still a major thing. Meth is now like the hot, you know, it pops and it changes from something different and, you know, on the daily basis here, just in the county. I actually have my work computer in front of me and I was just looking up overdoses that we've had in the county. We had an overdose at the mud bog. Somebody, you know, like we Narcaned somebody at the mud bog. You know, I mean, it, it's everywhere.
So we have links on the fentanyl page for anyone. That's open to the public, the soldouttv.com website, okay? So when they go to the fentanyl page, there's, there's, there's links on how to, how to get, what is Narcan? What is naloxone? There are videos about how to deliver naloxone. There's a video that's probably the most efficient video in all of our schools across the country based on what the feedback of schools tell us. It's a seven-minute video called Dead on Arrival. And basically, it's a seven-minute video that's very powerful that if you watch that seven-minute video, it'll tell you everything you need to know about fentanyl. So we're not trying to overwhelm people because the staff program that we provide, you can go as deep as you want on, on this. But what we want for the kids is, what is fentanyl? How is fentanyl? How do you, how do you, how do you see fentanyl? How does it come to you? What are the symptoms of a fentanyl overdose? What are the drugs and things that fentanyl is in? And then what do you do in a fentanyl emergency? You know, so all of those things are simple in a simple language for students that they can get through there. And your students.
Roman, I'm going to get you to pause. We're going to take a five-minute recess. I had a request to take a quick recess. We've been in it for a while and head to restroom. So we'll put you on hold for just a minute, okay? All right, thank you. Be back in a few minutes. I'll call the meeting back into order and you're on again, but I think you're about to get wrapped up against this point.
Yeah, I'll wrap it up. I was saying that all, all, our whole program meets North Carolina health, health and education standards, so that was really important for us to be able to do that. I, I, I think, I think in closing. With schools about this and I appreciate Dr. Lutz being here tonight. So many, so many superintendents, so many superintendents have been so cooperative, they've been so great in working with us. They understand the seriousness of the problem and our, our goal is to come alongside school systems and give them the tools that they need to effectively communicate this and to put the information in everybody's hands. And because we're a private 501(c)(3), our webmaster is making changes almost on a daily basis to this program. So when we get the feedback, we don't just take the feedback, we actually build it into the program. So what you're looking at on our website today didn't exist six months ago, many of the, many of the things that we've put into the program. So the, the, as far as the community's concerned, we're, we're glad to make that website on my radio show and on the PSAs that we do on Carolina Radio Network and Outer Banks Voice. We make the website available so any parent can access it. But what we want with the, with the platform that's much more in-depth, we want the schools to be able to deliver that password coded program to the parents as a school resource.
Okay.
So, you know, any questions, I'll be glad to ask and I'll.
All right. Thank you very much for coming out this evening. It's been informative and your passion is very obvious.
Keep up the good work.
I want to thank, I want to thank Commissioner Payman again for, you know, he really spearheaded with Renee Doughty over at the school system, getting this program started. I want to thank the ABC Board of Currituck County, and this is something that your audience needs to know. Many parents and many people out in the, out in the community don't realize that when they buy their liquor through one of our 16 government programs across the country, the goal of the ABC department here in Currituck is that underage kids will not get their hands on alcohol. And 10% of their net proceeds are delineated towards legitimate drug and alcohol, I'm sorry, alcohol abstinence programs. So for parents out there, when you purchase alcohol, it isn't just about selling alcohol. They're about taking care of and protecting your kids. They don't want any child below 21 to have their hands on alcohol. So that's one of the things we've been able to do in partnering with the ABC, is to put that message out there that, that the ABC is, it plays a very big role in this community in giving valuable dollars. We could never, to deliver this program without the help and the funding of the ABC Board of Currituck County. And I want to thank Trillium Health Resources as well. Trillium Health Resources, a credible mental health and wellness organization as well as opioid and fentanyl education. They've given me the opportunity to put this information about opioids in the hands of 28 eastern North Carolina school systems. So thank you all for what you do. We're looking forward to working with you. Anything we can do to answer any questions, you've got my information. But we're proud to provide this program for Currituck County students and very excited about the future and about what we'll be able to do as we continue to move forward. The technology, one of the positives about COVID is that the technology is incredible. We're getting ready to partner with one of the foremost technology companies in education. We're going to be adding a whole new program that we're going to make available to Currituck County schools here very soon, that is an algorithm, that is a diary for students that they, that schools can measure their, their academic behavior as well as their mental, emotional wellness that's available to parents and to staffs of schools. So this new algorithm is going to allow our pledge program to go to the next level because we'll be able to give statistical evidence throughout the year that schools will be able to use to help kids maintain mental and emotional wellness and academic strength. So we'll look forward to, to letting you know about that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Ms. Chairman, I would like to say that if he wants to, he can move and live in Currituck.
Right. Sheepper over here. Don't get him started.
I'm close enough, right?
Right. Yeah.
We could maybe pick somebody that we could have him replace.
All right, all right. Kevin, bye.
To a swap.
All right, all right. Next up this evening is public hearings. The first item is PB 16-06, Windswept Pines, Phase 3. The applicant and owner of Allied Properties LLC is requesting a preliminary plat, special use permit for 14 residential lots located in Phase 3 of Windswept Pines, Taps Map 9, Parcel 6A in the Mayock Township. This agenda item will not be heard tonight. The applicant has asked to move it to our October 16th meeting, as they do not have legal counsel present here, they had a scheduling conflict. So with that, I need a motion to.
So moved.
Move it to the 16th.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next up this evening, it's old business. Item one, confirmation of a motion for PB 23-22, Currituck County text amendment, adequate public facilities. This request was initially heard and approved by the Board of Commissioners on September 5th, 2023. The Commissioners will consider a new motion to clarify approval of the amendment. And basically, this is cleaning up the motion that we had to meet the legal requirements to change the language of adequate public facilities. Commissioner Payman, as you made that motion, would you be?
My penance, I get to remove. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve PB 23-22 because the request is not in conflict with the UDO or county code ordinances and is consistent with the goals and policies of the Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan, including infrastructure and county services goals 1, 2, 3, 7, and 8, and infrastructure and county services policy 7.2.
Thank you. We have a second.
Second.
Owen, Owen, favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to suggest that we have the county attorney come up with a handout that be given at each SUP meeting so that the public can read it and again, pick up on why public comment has been eliminated.
Okay. Well, not yet. We're eliminating.
Well, yeah, will be up for discussion and to take action on, yes.
What's that?
It was listed for the retreat.
All right. New business. Number one, Tulsa Creek Elementary School, GMP, guaranteed maximum price of design build for Sussex Development Corporation. With that. Morgan?
Yes, before you is a design build amendment. This is for the Tulsa Creek Elementary School. The guaranteed maximum price is $60,918,541.64. Of course, that amount is contingent upon the funding approval from the local government commission, which we anticipate receiving. I believe we meet with them October 3rd.
Okay. So any questions from the Board of Commissioners? All right. We need a motion to approve this contract.
Since it's Mayock, I will move to approve it.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Carries unanimously. Thank you. Up next is Board of Portments. We have the jury commission to reappoint Liz Hodges for 2425 by NEM.
So moved.
Second. I'll give, give me that one to Miss Kitty.
There you go.
I'll go with the second.
All right. Just catch all that, Leanne. All right. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Consent agenda up next. Just one question for me out of that on the personal policy. Just happened to catch holiday pay, which I have talked to Ike about recently. Let me jump to that page real quick. Back up here. Really, it's just, how, how does holiday pay work? Like for a full-time employee that works part of a holiday, there was some question about when they start getting paid, regular pay versus holiday pay, just so we have it out there. Since it was here, I just thought I'd, I'd bring it out publicly and let you take a second to expound on that, Mr. Creed.
Well, what the, what the policy provides is that, I'll just read it, regular full-time employees who work less than eight hours or do not work on a holiday will be paid eight hours of holiday pay. So basically, if, if I worked four hours on a, on a holiday, Christmas Day, well, that's probably not a good example, let's say Veterans Day, then I would get my base pay for those four hours plus the holiday pay on top of that. But at midnight, if my shift rolled over into the next day, which is not a holiday for eight hours, say, I would just be receiving my regular base pay, not a holiday pay on top of that. That's right. That's right. That's what the policy provides.
And what is holiday pay specifically? What does that mean? So is that time and a half, basically, or is it double time they're getting for those hours? Is there, there was some, quite, looking at this, it said something about 24 hours of holiday pay?
Well, it's, well, the holiday, the holiday is from midnight at the beginning of that holiday, midnight in an example of Veterans Day, to midnight at the end of Veterans Day. That's a 24-hour period in which an employee, if they are working during, if they're eligible employees, working during that time period, they are eligible for the holiday pay for those hours worked.
Okay. Thank you.
I didn't think that's what we voted, let it make, if you come to work, we'll use Christmas. I'm a salaried employee too, so like, I get to work every day. But if you come to work on Christmas, you're a, we'll say a dispatcher, you come to work on Christmas and your shift starts at 7:00 on Christmas, okay? I thought how we voted was, you start at 7:00 on Christmas, and then you work, say, 7:00 to 7:00, and then most time they work 12-hour shifts, or whoever it was, I thought that they got the, I mean, they came to work on Christmas, not at 12:01, they just went back, I mean, to regular pay. I thought that's how we voted, I'm a salaried employee, so it doesn't affect me, but I thought that's how we voted, was they got the holiday on that shift. Isn't that what you...
I thought it was for the hours that you worked.
No, we voted that the full shift would be holiday.
The full shift of the holiday, because...
Yeah, but the full shift, like you said, if a shift starts at 7:00...
But why are you penalizing, discriminating against them?
What if you work 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and then you got the whole thing?
If my employees have to work on a holiday, I pay them the time that they worked on their...
The Sheriff's Department EMS get paid full-time.
They get, they get, so what you're saying is, if it's on Christmas Day, they're going to get paid, if they work for two hours, they're going to pay, they're getting paid for the whole eight-hour day?
Or four hours.
All right.
The issue is, they have to sleep during the holiday to come to work.
Christmas night, they miss that, they miss the family thing. I mean, what he's saying is, like, if they're working, where, this is how I thought this board voted, was you come to work, all right, if you work Christmas Day, 7:00 to 7:00 PM, you're a dispatcher, we're just using that as an example, because it's going to be public safety, 12 hours, they're going to get paid, all right? Well, the person that worked the night before, that's the dispatcher, that worked 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM, is going to sleep through most of the day and miss the holiday, then they come to work at 7:00 PM, and then at 12:01, they stop getting holiday pay. That's, I didn't think that's how we...
They did it the morning before, wouldn't it still equal the whole amount if they worked 7:00 to 7:00?
It depends on, it depends on the day, it depends on the day.
I think the confusion may be, holiday is typically double time.
Right.
So we're trying to equate a fixed eight hours of holiday...
Yes.
And double time. So if I may, and if I get it wrong, please correct me. So if I work 7:00 to 7:00, that is my normal 12-hour shift, I get eight hours of holiday pay, that's my vacation day on top of that. So it's not double time for 12 hours, it's just eight hours of vacation, eight hours of holiday on top of what you would normally earn.
Correct.
Well, if they worked 7:00 to 7:00 PM on the holiday, the Christmas, they'd get 12 and 12.
Of, of their regular pay?
They'd get their regular pay on the holiday.
And then they get the holiday pay.
If they're working, if they're working the holiday pay.
It's because it's recognizing every other employee that is not working is basically...
They're getting eight hours to stay home.
Eight hours to stay home.
And if you worked the night before, and then you came back on...
You're still getting your eight hours.
You got 12, no, you got 12 hours.
You get the four.
Because remember, from 12:00 to 7:00, right? It's seven hours, and then from 7:00 to midnight is five hours, you still worked 12 hours that day, you get a whole, you get a holiday, eight hours on top of that.
Right.
Yeah, you get paid your 12 hours and plus the holiday.
Correct.
Right.
But if you didn't work the day before, and you just come in at 7:00 on the day of the holiday, you only get the four to midnight, that's all you get.
Right.
And that's why...
That was what was a, was a question, right, and, and we discussed it at length, was, and that's why I brought it out tonight, because it just happened to be in here, if you come on at 7:00 PM and cross over to 7:00 AM the next day, you've crossed in and out of that holiday time zone, only part of your time is paid holiday pay and the other is regular pay.
From 12:00 to 7:00?
But there isn't holiday pay. See, I would suggest to you, you get, I mean...
I follow what you're saying.
To me, it would be eight hours of vacation day on December 25th. If you worked, you got eight hours. If you didn't work, you got eight hours. If you worked, you got your eight hours plus the hours you worked.
Right.
And then the hours that you worked on that holiday also have a different pay rate, is that correct? Am I thinking about that right?
So you came, you came in on Labor Day, for instance, and you worked four hours of what technically is that 24-hour period?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a high, is there a different pay rate for, for being at work during that holiday day?
No, you still get the same base pay, but there is, you do get that enhanced...
Additional...
Get an extra eight hours.
No, no, but your, the base pay, the base salary does not increase because everyone's being on a holiday.
Yeah, they just get their, you basically just get...
Unless they work over 40 hours.
Yeah. If you don't work it, I'm salaried. If I don't work Christmas, I get eight hours, just like anybody else, you know, that's exempt or whatever. But like, the most public safety, where we talked about this, and like, dispatch is public safety, first responders, they usually do hour for hour if you work the holiday. I mean, it's, it's, they're the only ones there having to work, and I will tell you this, you work Christmas and Jim Wheeler's in the crowd, he can attest, it's quiet Christmas morning till about 1:00 o'clock, and then domestics start, because the families are all in the house together. Some, some of my best domestics in my career have been on Christmas about after lunch.
But let me tell you, Mr. McCord, you know, back in the day...
I mean, and I know I signed up for it.
No, no, back in the day, I'd wake up at 6:00 o'clock on Christmas morning, and my phone would be going crazy. And I'd work all day till midnight Christmas Day, so, you know, you're right, I got paid for the holiday, but then I got paid, anything over my 40-hour work week, I got, you know, overtime paid for that. But as many days I worked all Christmas Day, Christmas Eve till midnight, and non-stop.
I think the challenge he's referring to is when we have the hybrid schedule.
Yes.
And the way it's laid out, you're not working a 40-hour week, therefore, the overtime is baked into the shift work. But I, I think the eight-hours holiday is the way, I think that's the way it should go down, right?
It creates an issue within, we'll use communications, because the day shift gets a full 12 hours.
And then the night shift gets...
They get just a split time.
No, the, the night shift should still get eight hours of vacation.
The day...
They should still get eight-hour holiday.
If you're public safety...
If they work four hours on the holiday, they should still get the eight-hour holiday.
Plus the four hours of work.
Public safety, but like he's saying during the daytime, we debated this in the retreat, but it's, the day shift, dispatch, I'm, I'm a dispatcher during the day, he's a dispatcher at night, and I work, I'm getting 12 for 12. Everybody else is sitting at home.
When you say 12 for 12, what do you mean by that?
They work a 12-hour shift, they're getting 12 hours, 12 hours holiday pay, 12 hours pay.
They're getting eight hours of holiday.
That's how it is everywhere else.
Today, he's paid for the holiday.
That's how it is everywhere else, that's all I'm saying. Do your research. I mean, I don't, one way or the other, how we do it, like he said, a perfect example, and then we wonder why we have, I don't know, I'm not going to get on a tangent.
Getting paid for the full holiday, you're getting paid for it. You're getting a set amount for that holiday pay, everybody is.
Eight hours.
They're getting their eight hours.
Here, let me, let me, we have firefighters that will spend the entire day...
At the, yeah.
At the station. They're not going to get 24 hours of firefighters' pay and 24 hours of holiday pay, just because the shift was on Christmas.
Mr. Chairman, I will move, we continue this and have...
And I need to interject really quick, so it, actually, the change is not to the holiday pay, it's actually to section 6 of 7.
It's just in the text, right. It is not in the text.
Well, the whole section is given to you so you can see the context.
Right, to the context.
The amendment, which has to do with...
But I knew this would cause a controversy, so I thought I'd throw it up.
And have it broken down financially and show the differences.
Okay, well, that is a different thing. So what's before us tonight is highlighted in blue...
Good job, Bob.
I just wanted to have the discussion, and it's on page 46, which is leave of absence and non-disciplinary leave, and, and that's about it. So it's just cleaning that up.
Yeah, this has nothing to do with...
No, it was, it just, it just was in front of me today, so I read it and brought it up so that I could confuse everyone here and on TV and on County.
We could bring that to you at your retreat if you'd like, with some financial, financial analysis and examples.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I'm looking for approval of the consent agenda.
Any further discussion?
Oh, gosh.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No, all right, thank you.
Actually have a motion for the consent agenda.
Yes. Right there, Miss Kitty, it was, did you catch that, Leanne? All right, she's on it as always. All right, I will recess the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners at this time and move into a special meeting, open a special meeting of the Tourism Development Authority. Item one is consideration of event grant funds transfer for Sanctuary Vineyards. This one's pretty simple, they didn't use all the money available to them at an event that we had approved the grant for and asked that it be, the residual be moved over to